It is now 6:30 and our meeting is going to be beginning. So, we are going to start with our agenda additions, deletions. Are there any this evening? Minutes and pay orders. The minutes are from June 3rd.
I'd like to make a motion to accept it.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Why don't we look them over so if you notice anything? Anything? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, approved. Next, we're moving on to pay orders. We have a new sheet in front of us. And so, the new amount is 203,934 and 89 cents. Do we have a motion?
Only a motion to discuss the pay orders. June 18th.
Okay, second?
Second.
Discussion.
You got lawnmower that was for the rec? Or for the electric lawnmower that we got? That's on here.
Conservation.
It was conservation.
So, do we have a motion to approve?
Not a motion. We just got a vote on it.
Okay. So, now, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, well, these are approved. Moving on. Okay, so, we do not have a road commissioner.
No.
Road commissioner report. Is there anything, Cindy, we can discuss?
How about the carriage load person? That's not been addressed.
Nope, she called today.
Huh?
She called today. No, it's not been addressed. Okay.
What was that?
From your truck.
They plowed, the town, the snowplow put...
Put gravel on the...
Put, no, I think paving.
Oh.
They rolled up the pavement, it sounds like, and rolled it onto our lawn, right on their lawn.
Okay.
I'm surprised Phil wouldn't just send him to go clean it up if it was a fall.
Quite honestly, the snowplow sends asphalt into my lawn and driveway every winter. The sidewalk is just falling apart and it's just... When the plow goes through it ends up...
Oh, the sidewalk plow?
The sidewalk plow ends up putting the debris everywhere.
It gives you some noise.
We just, yes.
Well, the sidewalk plow is the, uh, the address.
Yeah. So... How shall we address this?
I think we could just ask Phil to look into it, right? Or Phil or Charlie to look into it. Stephen.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And since we'll have to discuss the other matters when we have Phil, we're going to move on.
I thought I would do, because I don't know when our July meeting is on the paving, I thought at least send Pike a contract for what they bid on, the 85 on North Street Extension and Homer's Farm, and then figure out Church Street later. I don't want to, I'd like to get Pike's on this paving schedule at least for those two roads, and then we can figure out.
Do we need a motion for that?
No, I mean, you already awarded to them, but I just don't want to hold up the contract.
Then let's hold that, let's get up for that amount then. Thank you, Sam. Okay, our next is honorable mentions. The town would like to thank Charlie Woods for using his personal time to install the raft at Elfin Lake Public Beach, the road crew for all their assistance getting the public beach open this summer, Bruce and Maureen Duchesne for repairing vandalism damages to the Elfin Lake concession stand, repairing picnic tables, installing the volleyball net, all the volunteers who assisted with the memorial day parade, Adam Luzager for installing the ropes and buoys at the public beach, recommend members for drawing the mini soccer lines on the field at Minus Street Park, and to me for donating part of my salary to purchase magnetic signs for the constable's vehicle and safety vest.
And I wanted to add Kathy Luzager and Ben Luzager for fixing the ropes in the public beach. They did a good job.
He used my noggin. And I kept yelling at Ben from the Y's, like, "Mom, stop yelling! Come in, give him a direction! Ben, come back! From the next year, do is."
Okay. Public promise. Do we have anyone here?
We're to Wollin County Sheriff Agreement for fiscal year 2026. We have this in our packets.
Dave, would it be possible, I already, I did a little handwritten thing to get billed monthly rather than bi-monthly, is that okay with you?
I'll have to check with my bookkeeper.
Okay.
Sometimes I don't like to make arrangements for them because they yell at me if I...
Okay, well, don't do that.
They have a certain process and sometimes I think it's good and they're like, "Oh, we can't do that."
Well, if they have to do it bi-monthly, I only want to pay up. If they have to bill us bi-monthly, that's fine, but I only want to pay up monthly.
I can, I'll check with them.
Which is what we're doing now, but...
Well, if that's what you're doing now, okay.
I just don't want, on the road, to have to issue two checks a month, you know? That's odd.
Yeah, I totally understand that. I don't think it'll be a problem.
Okay. So, I know I have... Yes.
We started with Lee Jones.
A few years ago, right?
I was on board then, a few years ago. It was 11 bucks an hour.
Yeah, I remember some of those low days, but not quite that low, but...
No, well, that's when we started. I don't know what year it was, but 80s, 90s. It's been good all I know, I know.
Right. So, I think if we look at what we budgeted here, this fits in. If I'm correct, the amount that we budgeted is the amount of the contract.
Right.
Just difference by nine dollars. Yes, by a little. So, does anyone want to address anything about increasing coverage for 2026?
Can't.
We can't.
25, 26 budget stuff. Well, I should say 24, 25 the budget stuff.
Right.
We could discuss in...
Discuss with Dave, that's our thought process moving into the next budget is to increase coverage.
Okay.
Isn't that a possibility for fiscal year 2026?
It is a possibility. I guess once you get closer to thinking what you might want to increase it by, then we can start getting some numbers out. So, I think we're at 24 now.
We're at 24. So, I think we'd probably be looking to increase it to at least 25 and maybe up to 30?
I think last time we were looking...
We were at 30?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's still cut back from what it was before.
Yeah, we were at 40 at one point.
Yeah, we dropped down to 32.
Yeah, then 20, yeah. Clarendon's at 32, Mendon's at 32, Holy's at 32.
Hours a week.
Yeah.
Yeah, we started out at 20.
Well, we used to be 40.
Yeah, we were at, I think, when we first started, we made about 10.
This was when we were just getting our feet...
Yeah.
We had nothing. We didn't even have nothing else.
Yeah, I still have some towns that are like eight hours a week.
Yeah.
Shrewsbury is one, that's eight.
Yeah.
But you're looking in the low 30s.
Yeah, we'd be looking in the low 30s.
Okay.
So, let's see, we need to approve the contract. And a motion to approve the contract.
I'm sorry.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Great.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll have them sign and send you a copy.
Okay, and I'll sign it and send it back while you have it.
Perfect.
Your records.
Guys did a great job with those youngsters up on, at the Elfin Lake Public Beach. Deputy was in town, met me there, caught him coming off the end of the trail. That was perfect, so...
Yeah, sometimes a little conversation goes along, right?
Rob is going to talk about restorative justice with those six of them later tonight, too.
Yeah, we don't have that here.
They're going to take your case if you give it to them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's not, it's the BRAC or whatever, there's two, there's one for youthful...
Okay.
Youthful kids at risk.
Right.
And I talked to, me and Baker, whoever.
Yeah, I think that's coming up more later.
We're going to discuss it tonight.
Yes.
But it's a lot better than some of the ideas I had.
I, yes.
Well, thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you all. I'm good.
Have a good night.
We are moving on to arts and community spaces grants. Now, was this a grant that was just getting to the town?
This is the one that Shannon applied for.
This is the one that Shannon applied for, okay.
4550, and it's do a mural, a community breakfast, and a few other things, and they've already, we've already received the check.
Right.
And they said cash and a check means you accept the letter that's in your paca. They had terms in your paca.
Okay. So, here we go.
What do you need? You don't need...
So, what we need for this is... Do we accept the terms?
Yeah, we can do that, Mike. It's a bike that says, it's a... Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, we are good with that.
You know, there's a few things in there, like Shannon will have to do a grant, a grant report, number five says requires a report.
Yep.
Things like that, so...
Did they give the format for the report, so she doesn't have to do it, or... Oh, they have a little... Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Everyone!
Okay. Elfin Lake Concessions, Beach Erosion Grant, and Land and Water Conservation Fund Subcommittee. So, the grant application is going to be coming up soon.
Yes.
And Shannon said it's going to be a lot of work. And so, she suggested a subcommittee comprised of select board, rec, and conservation members to work on it. Okay?
So, it'll be kind of a dual work on the grant, but also work on capital plan for the building itself, too.
Okay. So, yes, concessions, stand upgrades. And Sandy found a possible grant through Land and Water Conservation Fund that supports updating the rec facilities.
Yes, and it's a 50% match.
It's a 50%.
It is a 50% match on that grant, but it's possible we could tie that in with the other grant for the erosion and come out with no local match at all.
Oh!
So, basically, the 50% would just be paid by the erosion grant.
So, she's going to see if rec members want to be on the subcommittee.
Ralph and Denise have already offered to.
For conservation. So, we have two people who've stepped up for conservation, a Chin seeing who will step up from rec. What do you think of this idea? And is there anyone on the select board who would like to serve? Two would be ideal.
Why would two be ideal? It seems like a lot of people that have four being on the other side.
Well, three, we couldn't have three because it would be...
No, I know we couldn't have three. I know we could put it...
It's going to be a lot of work. I mean, there's going to be a lot of coordinating with state professionals. I mean, Shannon and I were talking about today, we're going to have to do a whole phosphorus study on the lake and it's just, it's going to be, I think, it's going to be...
So, would people take different parts of the application?
Five, six, seven people, and then exactly...
And divvy them out on the other, so everybody's like responsible for a part.
And who would be project manager? It would be Shannon. Like, just in terms of, just keeping everything all together?
I think she'll coordinate a lot of it, and then I'll certainly help her.
So, would she, is she willing to be one of the people involved in the subcommittee?
Yes, probably whoever the committee decides, like, if you, I'm sure you'll vote as chair on the committee, and since it was her idea, maybe she'll volunteer to be chairing it, so...
So, do we have anyone on the select board who would like to serve?
I'll say.
Okay. So, Justin and Carolyn stepped up. Thank you so much to serve on the subcommittee.
Excellent.
Okay. Town Hall Heating and Cooling Systems. So, we don't have, how ahead are we?
Yeah.
Should we move on a little bit or to something else?
We can.
Yeah, because we're way ahead.
Yeah.
Oh, we're way ahead.
Heather's here for the fireworks permit, and that's quite a ways down. We could always... And you're welcome to stay and listen to the rest, too, though.
Do we want to go right to Wallingford Day? Or do we want to do the Ames Company proposed second shift? Because we are really ahead. We're super ahead.
That's because we're so good.
So...
Oh, do the Ames and then just...
Why don't we do the Ames first, and then we'll do the fireworks after? So, Ames Company proposed second shift noise. Okay. Has everybody read this over? So, I have a thought on this. It looks like the ordinance is that all outside noise needs to be over by 11:00 PM. If this work is going to be done outside, I think they have to cooperate with the noise ordinance.
But it's second shift, so what time does that end?
1:00.
1:00. Oh, theirs is 1:00.
Yeah, that's when the second shift gets over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe they can do all their outside thing before 11:00. And, you know, if they just close it.
No, that's Mill River Lumber.
Yes.
Oh, Mill River Lumber?
Yes, Mill River Lumber's closing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's a problem.
But Ames is breaking away and setting up a possible second shift.
Okay.
I mean, I hate to, I know it's the ordinance, but I hate to deny business that pays the town a lot of money in taxes.
And donates a lot.
And donates, and not be able to have the ability to open a second shift and make money.
Right.
Yeah.
So, how...
If it was up to me, I would put in a variance to the ordinance.
Okay.
I think there's going to be people who complain.
They probably will, but my concern is that plan's been here, but long isn't probably a lot of people down. In the east, around three shifts.
Also, the law is the law.
Well, the ordinance is the ordinance, yes.
Yeah, it's a law.
But we could grant a variance to it.
Could we get back to them and ask them if they could cease any noisy operations at 11:00?
Or any outside noisy operations?
Was it the debarking machine is outside?
Yeah.
And Erica, because she's had conversations with them.
Yes.
She said this wouldn't be outside construction noise. However, the debarking machine is quite loud, and that is done outside, so...
But this, the ordinance says construction. Is debarking construction? Is debarking construction?
Or is that just...
I don't know.
They're both G, noisy, just...
Well, you know, debarking dog. It's construction noise, noise emanating from the excavation, demolition, alteration, or repair of buildings, structures, property, or highways between 9:00 PM and 6:30 AM.
But then where are they giving me 11:00 PM?
And they used to run a third shift?
Yeah, they used to run all three shifts.
There's no other permits on this? This is predates Act 250, so there's nothing in that file that has any permits on this property, so...
Okay.
I don't know how, too bad Erica's, I don't know how variance works because the state hasn't applied for a permit, so...
Okay.
I mean, I'm not sure how it could work.
Okay. So, let's see...
I mean, you reached out to them, could compromise to 11:00. Because I just, reading the thing from the zoning, she said, "There are noise..." The noise ordinance says outside construction noise until 11:00 PM.
It doesn't say...
This wouldn't be outside noise construction.
But it doesn't, you know, but it doesn't...
I don't see where the...
It doesn't say 11:00 PM, though.
It's between 9:00 PM and 6:30 AM.
Right.
Except for emergency repairs necessary to protect people or property.
I guess the question is, do they need to run all the equipment at one...
That's what I was wondering, maybe they can just cease the debarking machine as...
Yes. Can we ask and see?
Yeah. And actually confirm with them their hours, too? What they expect to do.
I can't remember if I've ever heard, you know? It would be nice to hear, you know?
I mean...
They must run it during the day, too, you know?
I don't think I've ever heard anything... Then again, I'm not in town during the day, but until evening, but I've never been affected by noise permission.
No.
And it's with the, like, no work of law, or it's something, it's a...
Yes. Yep.
It was all...
I agree.
It's a tough thing, is that it doesn't really, it just says noise in general, so...
Yeah. Right.
But it doesn't, it doesn't mark, like, oh, like, construction noise is set time that it can't happen, but noise in general doesn't have anything.
Right, no.
Where do we get that a little bit of a lot number?
The 11 o'clock number? It's in your packet.
Well, it's in Erica's email.
Yeah, Erica's email.
It's not from a specific document, it's a...
Interpretation.
Right. There's also reference to 1:00 AM, and I don't know where that came from either.
That came, I think, from...
She said talking to us.
Yeah.
Oh, they may go until...
To actually get... From talking to the plant manager from the business itself, their certifications and requests, they're more defined.
Right. Yeah, I think we're going to table this and not make a decision until we have a little more information.
Let me see, why don't we see if they can invite one of you to your next meeting?
Yeah, that'd be great. Because that way we answer our questions, and it could just be done then. That would be great.
Yes.
Okay. And so, now, we're moving on to fireworks.
Kind of a nice segue.
We have fireworks permit from Shakurina. The fire chief has signed the permit. We have a post certificate of insurance. And now, just, do you want to authorize me to sign it?
I make the motion. If you need it.
Okay.
Okay?
Both set, I said.
I didn't actually...
All those, all those in favor?
Yes.
All right.
Okay. Then it is approved. I will be signing up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to it, as always.
For good weather.
Yes. Yes.
I already put in the request.
Does the department have it for the rain date?
If the rain date is, Michael said it last...
Michael knows it. He's on it because we have to be most specific with all the music people. They're the least vocal.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I can't remember.
Okay. Just wondering if we, because it's close to whether or not the permit has also the rain date, just so that we have it.
It's later in July.
We would recheck with the fire department in that, and like, make sure that everybody, everybody knew that there were going to be explosions on the...
Yes.
Because, I think, just because of the insurance wise, we have to have it documented.
Oh, that he's still insured at that during that period?
That's lower, but we accept that insurance for that.
Right.
That's the only thing I can think of.
We stuck on your stuff.
Does his insurance that he sent us, that doesn't...
It's a lot.
It isn't for a specific day, is it?
No.
For like the year or...
That's right, yes.
So, it's covered.
Yep.
Okay, cool.
Just wanted to make sure, yeah, just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything specifically about July 20th, that if something happens, that we're in a...
Right.
What I've learned is that talking to a lot of people about, not about this, but about, I can't remember, something else about other events, people in other towns, is people will always sooner or later. So... It's good.
Okay. Yeah, his insurance specific, it goes to April next year, so it's covered.
Okay, moving on. Restorative justice for individuals issued no trespass orders. So, we have some documents. Um... So, take a look at this. And Rob, when you provide an update, I would like you not to mention any minor's names.
Of course not, no.
Thank you.
I got in touch with, actually...
Was it Kate Getz?
Huh?
Was it Kate Getz?
Yeah, Kate Getz. Actually, I asked Walter that, and, because I said, "What can we do?" And he suggested, "Kate, who works at this place?"
Right.
And she said mostly they work with adults, but there is a division that works with at-risk. And what she, if we decide to do this, uh... We'll be reaching out to families of these youth beforehand to let them know what they, as well as their children, will expect during the process. And attached referral form. And... Samantha is the one that's going to be, and she's out of the office till 20, to the 25th. But the way it works is they want to know what we want done and what they get. And Sandy's gotten ideas.
So, my question is, it's part of this process... So my question is, as part of this process, usually when you do a restorative process, the person who initiated the hire has to have some sort of conversation.
With the victim.
Exactly.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's what we, we would ask for them, work plus, yeah, get the people...
So that the people affected have a chance to see what the effect was?
Yeah, yeah. And also you can find out more about what's in their minds.
And also to get them to accept responsibility for what they, what they have done.
And it may be that not all of these, but as you can see, there was...
Not all of them, so...
One, one parent wrote a letter already.
Yes.
Saying, and...
Yep.
Is there something we can do, so there's at least one person...
Maybe with this person, we might be able to see about...
We could send it to...
During the process.
We could send it to everybody.
I would say, send, send it to everybody, what, what do other people think?
I mean, part of this was, this removes it completely from the justice system, or the, the traditional justice system, right? So would they have records or anything else?
I don't think so, because this is...
What's that?
Would they have records if...
No, no, they don't have records.
No.
They would have, if they were charged.
Yes.
But they were not charged, but they were cited, so that's a record, yeah. You've given a citation that, that you cannot, your penalty is...
They were given a no trespass.
It's getting a ticket, you know? All my tickets are in records somewhere.
One family would like a chance to be part of the, yeah, okay.
I'm fully, I'm fully on board with that, I just wanted to make sure that, we think about the idea that it rescinds the, the order, or minimizes the no trespass order. I was just wondering if there's any way to, or to kind of wipe the slate clean on them if they are...
I don't, I don't think there's a real slate, I, I don't know if they, if this goes in any sort of record, I think it's just a citation.
That's what I, that's what I was curious about.
It would be a good record, it would be better than a, a no trespassing citation. I mean, this, this would...
That would go in their resume.
Okay, I couldn't agree more than I said that out yet. Yeah, so that would just kind of give them an idea of some of the chores.
And also, and also these, they, they have to understand that, just because you're in a group, you're guilty of whatever one guy does. You're guilty of whatever one guy does, and, you know, that guy may not, I don't know, but...
Right.
But they're going to be different responses, for sure, but reexamining what they did is, is, is going to be good for them, if they do it. And I would suggest dropping the whole trespassing thing and the two years completely.
So, I am not up for dropping the no trespassing until they take part in this process. If, they need to be willing to take part in the process.
There has to be something, there has to be something.
Upon completion of...
Upon completion.
Of course.
Yeah.
Yeah. That if they complete, if they complete the process...
That's the carrot and the stick, yeah.
Exactly.
I do this work, I get this, and if they do the work, and we make it hard enough and sincere enough, and get people interacting with it, they, they would be having a good feeling and... And less likely to recommit, you know? And, and tell their friends, you know, that, don't, don't mess with women for it.
I mean, I like the idea, I'd like to, as part of this process, meet with it, meet with the miners, but at the same time, meet with their parents. The same night the miners come in here.
Yeah.
Prior, we meet, the parents show up also, so they understand, they're, they're as much on board as, as kids are.
You can't make anybody do anything.
That can definitely be part of the process.
Right, yeah.
Some, some of the people involved in this incident might not want to take part in this at all, and then the no trespass stays on them.
Stays on.
But for those who are willing to take part in the process...
Yep.
I think we have, from the letter that we have, we have a mother and son who would like to participate in this process.
Yep. Well, we got, yeah, at least a lot.
I think, I think there, there may be others, too, you know?
I would say reach out to them, give them the opportunity.
They're not all willing for, they're, they're all over the place.
Yeah, but that, that, I, I like the idea, but I want to make sure that when they sit, you know, they come in front of us prior.
The parents, the parents have to sign off.
Right, the parents are here at the same time.
They have to sign off.
Right, yep. That would be part of the process.
Yeah.
Us meeting with them and having a face-to-face meeting, yes.
Usually we would have to have the parents, because they're technically...
Yes.
Yeah. They're getting a contract.
Exactly.
Do this.
Yeah, because they can't, exactly.
Right.
The, they can't sign.
No.
Right.
Okay, so...
One thing?
Yes.
On here, just maybe, the sentence about all items must be completed no later than, some sort of verbiage to say, to the satisfaction?
Okay, um, we, to the satisfaction.
You know, because, you know, if we want them to paint, and they only painted half, or did a poor job. Just to check it off the list.
I mean, they, they're going to, they're going to want something kind of specific, like how many hours, what is the job?
Right, and that's what, just make sure it's...
Yeah.
A rubric to say, this is, this is this completed, this is what we expect.
Right.
Not just you showed up and played on your phone.
Right.
This is what Samantha's going to look out to, right?
Exactly, Samantha's going to...
Right, and she's going to always say that, I mean, imagine if we send them painting, there's going to be somebody there supervising, at least drop them off and check them at, at different points, or stay with them, I don't know.
Yeah. And then maybe we can find that out?
Yeah.
When we talk to Samantha.
It'll, it'll be good, well, first, you know, you, we have to approve it, but then, uh...
They have to accept.
We'll, we'll, working with the details with Samantha, you know?
Yes.
Uh, and so, maybe, maybe if we agree in principle, then we'll work on the, the work that's expected, and the interaction with people, what that would look like, and then maybe at the next meeting, okay, sending out the letters, the forms.
Yeah.
Okay.
That sounds like...
So we may want to consider moving the date then, if it's, if we...
Huh?
Yeah.
Because depending on when your July meeting is, August might be, the end of August, we might just move it to September 30th or something.
Oh, exactly.
It's going to be longer summers.
So maybe, yeah, so maybe I'll just switch the date to September.
Or just pick, or, or pick hours, in other words, don't say it's going to be done by this date, you're going to work...
Until it's done.
You're going to work X number of hours.
Yeah.
Type thing. I just...
And, and the results...
Yeah.
Well, that, that's something that'll have to be kind of figured out, you know, how many hours did it take to fix what they broke?
I think that might be tricky.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like a date better. A date just to get it done.
Or, or completion of projects, like if we have it saying that this is, we need to make a rubric with Samantha and say, these are the things that we expect to be done at the end of it, just in case something happens that we can't get it done by the 31st, I don't know.
I like the hours idea, you know?
Or, or maybe also ask Samantha, is it better for hours, or better for...
Right.
For a date, or better for a project.
So I think we have a few questions.
Alright.
Yeah.
Because we're getting, well, my only concern, we're getting late in the year.
Right.
Yeah.
They're going to go back to school.
Yeah.
They're going to be doing this on a weekend, or after school, so to have it, try to get it done by the 31st, it may, in other words, it'll take them, they can't be here five days in a row to paint, they could be here a day or a night, get it started, and spread, and spread it over, but if you put in 10 hours...
Yeah.
So I think...
On this project.
Maybe talk with Samantha and see what she thinks would, would work better in this situation.
Or even, I mean, because it also, the question is oversight, who's in charge of the oversight?
Right.
Because that could...
Yeah, the oversight's a question, too.
There's a lot of questions we have for this person, on how, how it's worked.
Now we do have these projects in mind.
Yeah.
Maybe see if she thinks that these are appropriate.
Okay.
And then let her know our, our questions about who would oversee it.
Okay. Alright, so we'll put this on...
What's a good completion timeframe to put in?
Okay.
Yeah, and then we can talk about this at the July meeting.
Yeah, what is, what is the norm?
Right.
For the severity of a current incident?
Right.
Because that's also what you have to, you know...
Right. Well, it makes sense, if you break it, you fix it, so I think what we're offering to do is, it's logical, it's a logical consequence.
It is, but we should also make sure, you know?
Exactly.
It's not above and beyond.
Exactly.
Right.
Alright. So are we good?
Okay.
Okay. We are going backwards.
So that's approval, that's consensus, we're going, we're going ahead?
We've got questions.
Okay.
We've got questions that Sandy's going to get answers for, and then we'll have the answers on the July meeting, and then we can get the letter out, exactly.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be good, because...
But there's a few questions first.
We could have already talked to her, but she, I, I talked to the other person...
Well, after...
On the day before that person was going.
So, reading the letter, this program is a new program, so our questions might be very valuable in this process.
Right.
Yeah, no, it's going to be good to have a guide.
She wants to come to the next meeting, too, that would be nice.
Yes.
Yeah.
That would be great, and then we could have the questions answered, and we could either approve or whatever stuff we decide to take.
Because depending on her answers, you might have more questions.
Exactly, we might have more questions.
She'll listen to my very...
That would be great.
Okay.
So we're inviting her to the next meeting. Okay, going backwards, heating and cooling systems.
Oh. Yeah, quick one-minute intro while you're pulling up the...
Yes, that would be great, thank you.
So I think you received the documents that Sandy had sent out last Wednesday, there were a couple minor updates since then, so we, those were included in the hard copies that you received tonight.
Okay.
And we highlighted the changes, so if you, if you happen to review the documents already that you received electronically on Wednesday, you can just look at the highlights on the hard copies, if you didn't, if you didn't get a chance to look at them, then the hard copies reflect the full latest revision for it.
Right.
And maybe, so I can, I can go through those, those changes one by one, but maybe first, just a couple words of gratitude, so first, for the Energy Committee in general, I think, you know, we have not always been on the same page in terms of how to move forward, but one thing that we've been doing is really looking at the options and challenging the assumptions, and I think, you know, as, as a result of that, being able to iterate those options and, and move them forward, and I think the result is that you're getting better vetted information to make your decision with, obviously an important decision for the town, so I think that's important. And specifically, the gentleman to my left, Jay, and Robbie Stubbs, for when I, when the RFP went out, after the last select board meeting, Jay really provided a lot of good critical feedback to it, and after those changes were incorporated, the end, the result of the RFP is a much more robust RFP, so there were a lot of things that he caught that weren't in there, that needed to be in there, so it's a much, much better place than it was originally, and he and Robbie both worked specifically on the electric piece, really fleshing out what's needed from an electrical perspective there. And then I guess finally, just to the select board for last week, the last meeting, allowing us to move forward in parallel with the sustainable option, in parallel with the propane option, because I think as a result of that, it gave us an opportunity to really uncover what were some of the real concerns, and address those concerns, and I think, you know, like I said, I can, I can kind of talk through them one by one, but maybe if you were to have a chance to go through it, maybe some of those questions are no longer questions, so rather than pass through it, maybe I'll just stop there and just ask you, you know, what questions do you have on either of the options, or, or how do you move forward from here in terms of the RFPs?
I don't, I don't know that, I was surprised you went out to bid, I didn't think you were going to do that.
We talked about doing that for the boiler.
Boiler?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, no, but the, but the, the, the new six-head heat pumps instead...
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, you know, we haven't, we haven't said that out yet.
That is...
So we, so what we talked about was that...
That's what I was talking about, too.
Yeah, if we were to move forward, my understanding from last, the last discussion, was that we needed to make sure that it aligned with, first of all, it met Mark's concern, that come winter time...
It's Mark's concern as well.
Basically, everybody's concern, right, is that we have a, a operational heating system for the Hunter Hall, we need that, right? So that had to be incorporated in there, so that, that was kind of, that's the dates that you see in the RFP, those dates are probably a little bit more aggressive than a typical RFP, and it's done specifically to, what's absurd is, if you guys approve it tonight, it could potentially go out tomorrow, but the end result is trying to have everything completed by mid-November. So, and in that case, the, the heating system, in the most recent version, the current heating system would still be in place, so you could continue to use the oil, if, I mean, it could be completely installed as well, maybe by mid-September, it's completely in place, depends on, on the bids, and how they come back. Does that address your question, Rob?
So is this, this RFP, is this for option one or two?
This is for option two, so you've already seen the RFP for option one.
Yeah, yes.
And that has gone out.
Yeah.
Going with the RFP.
So this is, this is an RFP for option two?
Yes, the only thing on option one that hasn't gone out is the heat pumps for downstairs, correct?
Right, option one RFP was for the boiler replacement, I think that was...
Right, but also in that was also supposed to be, if I remember, the original conversation was supposed to be heat pumps for the first floor, all of it included in that first, or all gone out at the same time, because that's what the select board originally approved...
Yeah.
To look at and to discuss, or I should say, that we approved to spend the money on, was the boiler and the heat pumps.
Yeah.
Not doing anything on the second floor, or the electric option.
Yeah, Jay can probably speak to that better than I can, I'm usually more involved in that, I think at some point along on, you also recommended that we incorporate the second floor heat pumps as part of that as well.
Well...
So what, and then your, your comment at last, last meeting, which was a good one, was that, if we, as we prepare this RFP, make sure that we split it out three ways, so the first floor RFP, the first floor heat pumps is only split out, the second floor heat pumps is split out, the supplemental is split out, and then we've also included a new alternative, which we've asked the bidders to split out as well. If, once the specific equipment is bidded back, Robbie would do a load count with the, the exact equipment that's being proposed, in addition to the current load in the, in the building, and determine if a new system is needed. If that new system is needed, the first path would be to look at the phase, the existing phase three in the building that's currently, the siren is on, so we have to, we've started talking about that, we would need to follow through on that, if that, if it actually has been tried at the time, if that turns out to not be an option, then we would install a new system, that has been, that's one of the changes to the, to the documents, is that's been added in, Robbie met with Green Mountain Power on Friday, I think you...
I was there, yeah.
You were there as well.
Yeah.
So he got, he got the, worked out with Green Mountain Power, he said, you know, $35 connection fee, basically, recognized.
Providing they can use that other, that existing three phases.
Yeah, so then he talked through the other, other challenges, I think you had asked to have, which I thought was a good suggestion, have a receptacle put in for a generator.
Right.
If they do it, it makes sense to do that.
We're there, we're going, yes.
So that's been added, so I checked with Robbie, what would that cost, that's been factored in as well, so it's all in there, if we need to go that way, it's there, but the costs are split out by the bidders as you had requested.
Okay.
RFP for the first floor heat pumps only has not been created.
For the first floor heat pump is not ready to go?
Well, not, not only for the first floor heat pumps, it looks like option one included four-head heat pumps on the first floor. So that's the RFP that's already been sent out.
Originally, we were going to be producing an RFP that would be first floor only heat pumps.
Right.
Okay. Oh, and that has not been produced, okay.
Okay.
Okay. And this is the RFP for option two?
Correct.
Okay.
Option two has no supplemental, so just in case it is...
So option two does have supplemental? So the, the Energy Committee determined that we don't need supplemental upstairs, we, we, and the heat pumps will handle the upstairs, the downstairs, we do include supplemental, we, that's one change that we made in relation to trying to understand what some of the concerns were about it.
Yeah.
We switched from baseboard to wall mount units, so the, it seems like a minor change, the cost is about the same, it's, it's going to cost about $4,000, you know, to put it in. The cost is about the same. It's, it's gonna cost about $4,000, you know, to put it in. So it's, it's pretty cheap to put it in. But the key, the importance of it is that it maintains the ability to still put in propane later, if you want, because the, because the existing hydraulic baseboards are not disturbed. So you're able to continue to use the, the heating system, the oil-based heating system as a supplemental. We think it'll run fairly infrequently, but it would run as a supplemental in the meantime, and it would give us one year, one winter, to see how things go with primary heating and cooling system for the whole building in place, the, the four resistance wall mounts in place. Because some of the concerns about this option, frankly, were, does that resistance, is it gonna be comfortable? Is it reasonable for the people working in the building? And then also the cost. So we know a couple things about the cost, just in relative terms. We know that the propane is going up as a result of the clean heat standard.
But I also understand Green Mountain Power's got a 15% increase proposed to the state of Vermont for next year.
For electricity.
For electricity.
Yeah.
So.
But we also recognize that we have to go, we have to go solar. So that's.
Wow.
That's, that's something.
Now we're getting.
Let's do that first.
Well, what I'm saying is that this, this option buys you flexibility, because you can, you get a winter within place where you basically, for, for the cost of what you spent already on a propane boiler design and RFP, you can have your supplemental system in. And you can have your primary heating and cooling system for the entire building in. So you have an operational model in place, year one, for money that's on the table, and you, then you get a year under your belt of seeing, number one, is the resistance making it acceptable? The other piece we did was look back at, because the way, I think Jay spoke to the, to the codes, you know, the, the heat pumps need to be designed to work at minus nine exterior temperature, keeping the interior at 68. The resistance on the supplemental, by code, can't go on above five degrees outside. So I went back and looked at actual temperatures in, in the month of January for Wallingford, and John Armstrong made a good point that, you know, the coldest times of the day is like around 5:00 and 6:00 a.m., and the town hall opens at like, what, 8:30 or 8 o'clock in the morning. So I went back and looked at the actual temperatures in the past, and there, over the month of January, there were a handful of hours you could count on one hand where it was below five degrees. So we, and we're generally living in a warming world, right? I think we, we see that every day. But, so I think it's gonna be running very, very infrequently. I think generally, the, the accept, it's accepted, I believe generally, that the heat pumps, based on the heat output, the heat pumps, when you're looking at cost, are the most efficient way to heat and cool your building. Right? Correct me if I'm wrong, anybody. But that's gonna be more efficient than propane or resistance or anything. So the, the key is getting the heat pump systems in to the whole building as soon as possible.
I guess the only thing I could see an issue, I, I like that idea because we know that the boiler is old and needing it, but it might be able to live along, especially if it's not being utilized all the time.
Right.
But the one concern I would have is that we put this in and just have nowhere this winter, the oil goes, and then we won't have enough money or time to get the propane, and we'll just be putting money back into another oil. Like, I know that's what happened.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That would not happen, because the, you can have the supplemental heat installed for $4,000. The, the, the wall-mount units, the resistance wall-mount units are $1,000 per unit. There'd be two in this room, one in Julie's room, one in the fire district. The, the heat pumps would be on both throughout the first floor and the second floor, including the hallway. There'd be two heads in the hallway.
Okay.
Okay, so the, the whole building is covered with your primary heating and cooling source. Your most efficient heating and cooling source covers the whole building. You have your existing oil boiler as your supplemental. If that dies, you have your resistance wall-mount units in place.
Okay.
That gives you, gives you two, three layers of protection, and it gives you a, a one-year experiment at the, you know, at $4,000 to determine, is this reasonable or not? It gives you time to understand, you know, what's happening with the cost, what's happening with the clean, the clean heat standard, right? So the Public Utility Commission does that on a webinar this week ago. They have to come back to the state legislature in January of next year with a proposal as to how much it's gonna, so the, the clean heat standard basically says, you know, state of Vermont recognizes the impact that greenhouse gases has been having. They're forcing the utility commissions to, to purchase credits to compensate for the damages being done. Right? So the, the, anyone who sells fossil fuels in the state of Vermont has to purchase these credits. Those credits, the, the cost of those credits will be passed on to customers. Propane customers will pay. So we don't know how much it's gonna be. That's the thing, right? So, so this buys us time. It also buys us time to, to Rob and Mark's point about the solar. We don't know, you know, how, what's the, we think there's options on the solar, but I was at an energy fair on Saturday in Mount Holly, talking to one of the Select Board members from Chester. They're currently in the process of purchasing, purchasing solar panels outside of Chester. So there's options within Wallingford, there's options outside of Wallingford. So.
I, I have a question. It looks like the total upfront cost for option two would be between $47,000 and $73,000.
Uh, I think that's just.
So I'm gonna play devil's advocate here.
If the service is upgraded.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So I'm, I'm gonna play devil's advocate. We put down between $47,000 and $73,000 if we go with option two. Correct?
You say you put it down?
We pay that.
So you pay whatever. So if, if it's, if it's determined based on the, the load count.
Yeah.
That a service upgrade is required, and we cannot utilize the, the existing three-phase service in the building. That's currently only being used for the siren. $300 a year.
So this year, if we go with option two, how much are we actually spending? Is it $4,000?
It's, no, no, it's, so if you're, option two, you would wanna have the heat pumps in.
It'd be $41,000.
So, so you have that. It's $47,000. If you don't, if you don't need a supplemental system, it'd be close to $47,000, our best estimate, based on what the experts tell us.
Okay.
Right? If that service is required.
Yes.
And we cannot access the existing three-phase service in the building that has just only the siren.
Right.
Then we would have the service in upgrade included as part of that, and be closer to the 73.
So here's my concern. We go and we put down the $47,000. We find out that the cost of the electricity is too much, and then we have to still get a whole new boiler. Do you follow what I said? Does that?
So.
Does that make sense?
So if I, I think where she's going is if I electricity, I'd like, sorry, go ahead.
No, well, I'm just, I'm just saying, why take the chance? I wanna, I want the, I want the propane boiler right now, and I think the next meeting and the next meeting. Why take the chance? And I, I don't think it's gonna last 40 years. And I would like to see a building that has this and how it's working. You know, we, we planned this, we planned this, this propane thing, and we gotta do it now. Now. That, that's where I am.
I have a different opinion. I think with everything that's happening with climate change, there is, everyone is gonna be moving to getting away from fossil fuels.
Let them.
That is, but the thing is, is that if, if we can make this work, if we can make it.
That's the game board.
Make it affordable. That is, so I, I am not, I'm not against option two. I'm just concerned that if, if we put down that much money, and then that doesn't work, then we still have to get a boiler.
So I, I was starting from the starting point that I thought was a, a well-accepted assumption, is that heat pumps are the most efficient form of heating and cooling a building. Right? So our neighbors to the north, Burlington, is currently in the process of taking out their gas utilities for heating and, and doing smart electrification. Right? Electricity, Green Mountain Power, again, the electric, it changes, it fluctuates just like propane.
But it'll never go down?
Well, and it'll go down with solar, because we'll own the panels and we will control the solar.
But at some point, we've already looked at different solar types, but we still have to buy the panels ourselves, pay to put them in, and then we're gonna have a 20-year payback period on the solar panels before we make a profit, and the solar panels only have a 20-year life. So I'm.
To your point about payback, I mean, the, the upfront cost difference between a propane boiler, between option one and option two, will take you, first of all, it's, it's a question mark on the propane operating cost. It's a question mark on the electric operating. I think I have a good understanding of which one's higher and which one's lower, but regardless of that, the, the payback period for the, you would take to make up the difference in upfront cost between option one and option two, we'd have to figure it out, but it's gonna be a long time. And if it turns out that, that like, like I believe and like, you know, talking to other people, that the, that electricity and the heat pumps are, in fact, the most efficient way to heat and cool a building, then you're also paying more every year for propane. You're heating the coldest part of the building with at least a less efficient heating system. I, I just, I, it's a head scratcher for me. I just don't understand.
How come this is coming in at the end of, of this whole project? All of a sudden, this new, new option?
So this, these have been, been kicked around in the Energy Committee for a long time. So I, I believe that the Energy Committee, the role, our role is to discover options for you to address technical issues for the town that's related to energy. And then for us to vet those options internally, so we can come to you with vetted, sound information. Okay? That's when these, that's when this option came forward. When I felt that we had that, that's when this option came forward.
When? When was it?
When we had vetted it thoroughly.
Okay.
In the Energy Committee, to give you, to give you sound information. The key is, the key is.
Last year, or when, you know, when, when did you, when did this idea come?
So unfortunately, the Energy Committee can't really offer you an opinion about which way you should go, because we're evenly divided.
So we were evenly divided on the prior rep, rapidness. So the one change, one change that was made after the, the Energy Committee vetted was that we switched from the baseboard resistance to the wall-mount resistance. I've already gone through what, what, how important that changed. Oh, it seems like a minor change. How important that is in terms of flexibility for you to understand and address, to have real-life experience and understand what's happening in the future. You can, you can get option two and not preclude option one. It costs you $4,000. You cannot do option one and preclude, and not preclude option two, because you've spent too much money, and you don't have your primary heating and cooling systems in place. So we can take, to Jay's point, we can vote again based on the updated options and, and discuss it. But to his point, you're, we're not the decision-making body. You guys are the decision-making body. We just wanna bring you the most vetted information that we can provide to you. You're the ones who make that decision from the B F of the town.
Well, I will say that this looks like a very thorough proposal that you have here for, for option two. Very thorough, very thought out.
So I've got, I got, I have concerns about, again, many concerns about going with the electric option and the upstairs heat pumps at this time. The first option is, we allocated X number of dollar funds through the ARPA for this project. I'm not sure what this does with everything going on, including the boiler to those funds, but at the same time, yeah, we may have extra funds, but the sidewalk is gonna go over. It's already over what was anticipated. So if the funds have gotta go somewhere, they've gotta go to that sidewalk, because we've already committed. With that said, I see if the, if we put in a boiler, we put in a propane boiler, and I, and I agree that everybody wants to go.
Green.
Green as, thank you. Green as much as possible. But at the same time, my concern is, if the boiler goes in as, as originally proposed, this is when this whole conversation, when we talked about the ARPA funds, it was a boiler and a heat pump downstairs at that time, and that was it. That's all we discussed. So that's where we allocated the funds accordingly for that little segment. Now we've gone to change our supplementary heat to electric. But, so that's my concern. I'm, I'm against putting in the electric, and I will be, and I'll vote no on it. I'll vote yes for the original boiler, propane boiler, heat pumps downstairs, to be discussed for the upstairs later. In the recent, in my reason for the upstairs later is the funding. When we have a system, if the boiler gets replaced, everything will work as it does now. With the two Lennox units, may not be the most efficient units outside, but at least they cool and they work as much as we use upstairs. My reasoning for not wanting the electric is, I, I could see an awful lot of hidden costs. To put in an additional heat pump, it's gonna require a sub-panel, small sub-panel, because we don't have space in the original. If we go to three-phase, not only are we going to, if we can get the use of the other three-phase line that's here, we have to change all equipment in the basement, the entire building-facing equipment. So in other words, we're gonna have to put in a 400 amp three-phase panel in order to power the building. I, I can see an awful lot of hidden costs associated with that, way more than $4,000.
It's different, different numbers. Sorry for the confusion. So everything that you've just said has been discussed in the Energy Committee and with Robbie, and.
Right.
So, and it's all captured in two ways. In the RFP specifically, so it will be bidded out, with all of those things having captured, thanks in large part to Jay and Robbie catching these things and making sure that they're in there. So they are in there. They will be bidded out. You will understand what the costs are, and you will be able to, based on your review of the RFP, if there's anything else that we missed, please let us know, because we can still add it in. It's in there. Number two, it's also in there in terms of the best estimates that we can provide to you in terms of the cost. So when you say you're concerned about the ARPA funds, I look at the cost, the upfront cost of putting the propane boiler in, and I look at the upfront cost of putting your entire system in and being most efficient right off the bat, and they're roughly the same. But I don't understand the cost, the cost concern.
I'm look, I'm looking at, right now, our electric bill is $400 a month. I'm looking at an electric bill if we go with your, with electric heat. I'm looking at an electric bill, someone enabled it, probably, I'm gonna guess, I'm not sure what it'll be, but I'm gonna say seven, eight hundred dollars a month. I think it'll double. That's just my feeling.
So.
I don't see.
The comparison is not the electric bill now versus the future electric bill.
But when they're proposing a 15% increase.
The comparison is the future electric bill versus your future electric and propane bill. That's the comparison you need to think about.
But if you use the heat pumps as your primary and the boiler as your secondary, yes, the heat pumps are going to heat out, heat the building until such point as, you know, the furnace will kick off. So we're gonna have very minor amount, I say minor, but we're gonna have way less propane usage as we do oil. So that price is gonna go down.
If you put your, if you put your heat pumps in this year.
And that's what we were talking about on this floor. The upstairs, very seldom, I think that's turned down to 50 degrees most of the time, if that.
Yeah, I mean.
It's very low. We don't even.
Right now, you don't have RFP for, for heat pumps on the first floor. We have, we have the heat pumps.
But that's, that, that's my concern, is that's where the original conversation was. Heat pumps on the first floor and a propane boiler, and we've gone so far beyond it.
I'm sorry, I wasn't part of those discussions. I can't think of that, but all we're, my understanding, your key concern, which was a good one, is we gotta have, whatever we do, it needs to be in place this year. We have a solid solution in place this year. My assumption was that you also wanted the most efficient system in place this year in terms of ongoing cost. It's generally accepted that heat pumps are more cost-efficient than propane.
Right. Propane, well, yeah, everybody has different opinions. I mean, mine is, a propane boiler at 98% efficient is more efficient than the power grid. So I just, you know, working, working with that side of the thing all the time. That's, you know, I see those issues constantly. So, but that's, that's mine. I'm not sure.
What, I know this is not what, you guys, sorry, my voice is, you have prepared, but I understand the concern of taking out a system upstairs that is working for us, for our, for the limited. purposes that we use for that. But just having, I mean, as I, I like the idea of going for the heat pumps part this year, because one, that would just be, it'll be less work than trying to dig the dish, get the tank in here and do all that, and then have one more here on our oil boiler that we can actually see how much things are going to change, but I feel like maybe then exiting out upstairs, doing the heat pumps and the resistance down here, and that would be a lower cost even more because we wouldn't have two or three upstairs, or how many that would be.
And importantly, to your first point, the upstairs existing system is not taken out, and this solution is not taken out. You have the option to utilize that as an oil boiler or in the future as a propane boiler if you decide to do so. It does not, it does not preclude that option. You could, if you put the heat pumps in the second floor, they will operate as the most efficient way to heat and cool your building, right? And same with the first floor.
No, I agree, I agree on that point, it's more so if we're like, exactly, you bring up a good point, Mark, about the idea of the total cost of everything with the sidewalk project and there are other things that we funded already with the ARPA fund. If we, just if we focus on resistance and heat pumps for downstairs, see how that load and how much that actually, how comfortable that is in here, then we can then, because we don't have to use the ARPA funds this year. So, we think about doing that here and then when we say, okay, that actually was fantastic down here, then we mind them up there, then we fill that winter on the oil burn.
So, your proposal is just to do the heat pumps downstairs this year?
Well, the heat pumps and the resistance.
And the resistance.
Because the biggest thing is that if we want to be able to get to this winter, we need to have some solution that's going to put less load on the oil boiler.
But, so, to that point though, you would be having, if there's any heating going on at all upstairs, you would be putting work on the oil burner, because that's what's currently heating upstairs, if you don't do heat pumps upstairs.
No, I understand that, but just that it would still be less because it wouldn't be the most, the downstairs and then the upstairs and the fact that we keep the upstairs at 50.
But going back to Mark's point, if it does die, you now have nothing upstairs and you have a hydronic system that's, I mean, you would have to drain the hydronics, I would think, just to be safe, Jake can try to speak to this better than I would, but, I mean, if the ARPA funds, it sounds, I don't know exactly what the numbers are, but we have a pretty good understanding of what the costs are upfront. We'll better understand if you go forward with the RFP, when we get the bids back and understand what equipment's being specked out, we'll know, and after discussions on the in-house service, we'll know what that costs, is it closer to the 47 or is it closer to the 70?
We can put this out to bid, but that doesn't mean we have to accept the bid.
Same with the...
Same with the boiler replacement.
Same with the boiler, so we can use what we get from the bids to make a further decision. By saying that we approve putting this out to bid, that's all we're doing, we're not, and we're not shutting down any option, we have, we have a bid out for a boiler, we would now have a bid out for option two, and then we could see which one we go with. I am not opposed to putting this out to bid, option two.
I am and only because it doesn't include the heat pumps on the first floor.
It does.
Or I should say separated from the second floor.
It does separate them out, and towards the end of the RFP, it's separated out by cost. Actually, yeah, it's in, so I just listed it two places.
Okay.
Let's ask if it goes out. Yeah, the very last page, the...
Oh, yeah. Yep, yep, it separates it out.
So, you specifically requested that in the last meeting.
Yep.
So, by that, we're asking for it itemized, so is that second floor is separate?
So, you understand what equipment's being bid, Robbie can do the load cap based on that, we understand is a service upgrade required, and you also understand what's the cost of the first floor heat pumps, what's the cost of the second floor heat pumps, we already know the cost of the resistance. And then you also know the cost of proposed actuals on the service upgrade if it's needed. In the meantime, it buys us time to have discussions about utilizing the existing service.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify, so the resistance, that those would be able to be the supplemental things that they could heat the internal temperatures or the temperatures where the, because it's taking the air from underground, that's the major issue, right, when it gets too cold for the heat pumps, right?
Certainly, it draws air out of the ground.
Right.
But when it gets too cold, the heat pumps take more energy to stay defrosted than you actually get, so that's, they become, I guess, less efficient, they start costing way more money to...
So, then the resistance is basically, it's really just for the internal temperature, it's not for the, it's not gonna help the heat pumps at all?
Well, so the heat pumps, so they work as an integrated system, so we didn't talk about the smart thermostat at all, but the smart thermostat will help tie this together. And as Jay pointed out in the last select board, there are certain code requirements that have to be met around the heat pumps and the resistance heat you're using as a supplemental. So, the heat pumps need to be designed to operate down to minus nine outside. We've already determined the internal working temperature maximum should be 68, right? So, it needs to meet that on the day, and then the resistance heat needs to be set up, wired, such that it does not kick on above five degrees, okay? Then you look at the actual temperatures, there's very few times that that resistance is actually going to be needed. For the most part, you're gonna be running off of your, for 99% of the time, you're gonna be running off your most efficient system. And the smart system, I don't have a whole lot of experience with it, but what I've read about it, you can get some good information back, some good data in terms of, okay, how much energy is being used by your primary system, how much energy, you probably know more about this than I do, how much energy is being used by the primary system, how much energy is being used by the secondary system? That can give us cost information and break that out. If we have them in place, for me, it's a very inexpensive experiment, which you don't even have to, if we don't use it, we still put in the boiler, no damage done, right?
Yep, yep.
Well, we've upgraded to a 400 amp service that we wouldn't have needed if we didn't do the...
Well, so if we find, if we find when the bids come back, that the difference between a 400 amp service versus not is these four resistance units, then we have a decision we can say, at that point in time, we can say, okay, we're just playing smart, we're not gonna do that, or we'll just put the heat pumps at this point in time. Unless we have access, unless we can access the existing system, then, because there are some advantages to operating them on three-phase, right?
Well, they're way more efficient.
They're more efficient and they run at slower speeds, so there's gonna be less wear on the thing, so, I mean, it's probably more costly upfront, but...
That, yours is...
Sorry, there also is a cost to the boiler in that to have the engineer come out and do the walkthroughs and everything, we're gonna be paying by the hour for that. So, both of them come with supplemental costs, both options come with extra costs.
So, all the way through on that.
Right, so we're gonna pay probably every time somebody comes out to bid on the boiler, you know, if he's $140 an hour, we're gonna pay minimum of, I guess, in three hours to have that come out, I mean, he's gonna charge drive time to and from and time here.
So, that can actually be part of our decision-making, is do we want to have all these extra per-hour costs we're gonna have that are associated with the boiler?
If we have an RFP and someone is here to show the heating and ventilation people where the boiler is, I'm not seeing the need of the engineer being...
So, we wouldn't need it in that case?
I'm not sure what the reasoning for having them here was.
I thought it was originally for the verifying upstairs how much the asking being utilized.
Ah, sorry, I remember.
And we have heard the whole time that Bill Wilson's saying that, no, we don't need anything upstairs, but...
I mean, it might be worth just having him here for the site visit, but unfortunately, in the RFP, it's, everything is, you know, and...
Yeah.
Right, he's not, that's not part of what he's paid for, so it's kinda tied us into... Oh, he's tied us into...
First of all, the site visit is a one-time mandatory meeting, so it's not like he's gonna have to come down here multiple times, but that's only gonna be a tiny portion of his extra fees, because he's gotta do shop drawing, review, he's gotta do review requisitions.
Yep, yep, Jay dropped off a, I mean, dropped off a thing today with everything that he'd like Dan to do. So, I think we're at a point where we can make a decision whether we want this RFP to go out or not?
I'm making a motion that we, sorry, I wanna clarify one last, before I say anything, I have to say anything. So, the original one with the propane has already gone out?
Yes.
That one's gone out, but that doesn't have any heat pump.
Doesn't have any heat pump in there.
No heat pumps in it.
Yes, it's just for the replacement, no heat pumps.
If this, option one in the state represents the long-term vision for option one, but it could be, the one advantage is that, to Mark's point, it could be spread out over different years if you wanted to do it that way.
Okay, so then on the bit summary on the back, then, is the first floor supplemental heat, is that for, and...
That's the four resistance wall mounts.
Okay, so there's nothing then upstairs?
Nothing's upstairs.
Okay.
If you just ultimately decided that you wanted a different supplement upstairs, you could put coils into the existing air handlers up there, as a suggestion that Bill Wilson made, but again, that's, we don't think that's necessary, I don't know why you'd do it.
So, if they issue this RFP, is there a diagram or anything, or is that something they give us? I mean, like with the boiler replacement...
So, we explained in words what we're looking for, and I think they, they would, I mean, this is something, if I speak to this.
We changed it to be more of a design build RFP. It started to get a little confusing when we had a drawing, because it started to look like a design and it wasn't a design, so we changed it to just a performance, in words.
Now, the bit summary says that there will be second floor heat pumps.
Right, but it's just going to be an itemized thing, so we know what that cost would be, but then we can, then turn it to make an actual agreement that would say this is what we're wanting.
So, do we have a motion?
Can I ask one more question? So, we put this out and they, and we're asking contractors to tell us the best way to get to this phase, how do they know that we, that...
Well, we have certainly, so again, Jay, it's very helpful in this, in terms of defining, certain things should be defined in terms of what we want, certain things are left more open to the contractor.
One of my questions is, so how, does, is there language in here about no heat pumps attached to the exterior?
So, we talked about the historic...
No drilling requirements.
There are things in here that say like no drilling, no, no drilling, certain things, that is included in the RFP?
Yeah, so under permits and code compliance...
What page is that, Tom?
Page two.
Okay.
Yeah, so additionally, design and installation shall not have a negative impact on the building's historical listing in terms of the vision of historical preservation. For example, units located in the rear of the building or attached on the side of the building, just as an example, the contractor, yeah, so then...
Yeah. Yep. So, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this RFP for the heat pumps to go out.
Option two.
Option two.
Option two.
I will second that.
Okay. So, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
So, it's fine, nothing?
So, we have approved to put this RFP.
So, we've defined kind of the timeline that we talked through last session for the propane boiler, we just wanted to get your additional eyes on that, because part of it ties into your future meetings and things, make sure that you're accepting, so I think it's pretty much detailed on the first page in terms of the upfront pieces, and then the back end would be, so bid opening will be August 5th.
How many days after that is a bid open for it?
So, then the 15th, I think, we plan, we'll start of work. So, again, it's more aggressive than the propane boiler, but it was intentional because, to your point, Rob, we're a little bit behind in getting this in to you guys, and we're trying to make sure that we meet Mark's requirement, make sure we got it in by the end of the year.
So, did you say the 18th?
So, 15th of August will be the start, and then we say completed in within 90 days as a maximum, to make sure that's completed by...
Complete 90 days.
The work. Yeah, the work, yeah, completed by mid-November.
Okay.
So, the bids open Monday, the 5th, we open the bids, uh, wait.
So, that's, yeah, so I guess two weeks, two weeks to turn it over, well, less than two weeks.
But we have to make a decision after the bids go in, so is there work in the calendar for us within that 15 days, or 10 days for our session?
Well, let's see, what's the first Monday and August?
August 5th, and then the 19th.
And then the 19th. Okay.
Oh, one note also, the bids for the boiler, you have them going back to the engineer, he can't open them, he can't touch them, he can't look at them. Okay. They're sealed bids.
They're electronic.
They have to, they're supposed to be sealed, correct?
Right.
They have to be sealed, not electronic.
Yeah.
It'd be an envelope in here.
We should add that to the, we should add that to the order.
We advertise it, because right now, in the advertisement, I believe it says electronic bids.
Right, but that's just, that's the towns, every town's, you know, has to be sealed bids.
Sealed bids.
I just wanted to clarify one last thing, so that if we have a meeting on August 5th, the bids are due...
In two weeks after that.
Two weeks after that, and then on the 19th, we can make a decision, or no?
We open the bids.
Bid openings are the 5th, so assume you might, you'd make a decision that night.
Because the deadline for bids is August 1st.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I see.
And we're gonna open on...
It was a bid opening, the phrase, you know, that made me...
And that's when we'll make a decision.
Right.
Yes.
August 5th.
Then we inform the selected contractor and they can start work on the 15th.
Because I'll open the bids at that August 5th meeting.
Right.
Yes.
And then we'll, and then we'll make, that was a confusion, yes, I was confused as well.
I thought, I thought that the bids were open, they're open for everybody to then apply the...
No, no, actually, the deadline...
Yes. So, just going back to the time frame.
And your sealed bids.
Keeping everything above board.
If we issue this tomorrow, I leave for vacation on Wednesday, so I need to get something out of the wrong herald tomorrow, do you have contractors, like for the propane, I sent notices to a number of contractors that I'm aware of in the area, just so they have...
Is there anyone that we should send this notice to?
Or that you, I mean, I'm assuming you, I'm not...
The only person, the only contractor that I've personally talked to is Bill, but...
Bill Wilson, okay.
But I'm sure Jay probably has a number.
I'm just, I'm, I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering if somebody from Energy can take that task on of just forwarding, or forwarding the RFP to a number of individuals, you can CC me on them, but...
Okay, so not just identify them, but actually forward it onto them.
I would.
You have an electronic copy, so you can email them, we just need them sealed when they can mail back to us.
All right, and then is there like template language on the bid, the sealed bids, that we should make sure we include in here, just, is that good enough, just mentioning here that the bids need to be sealed and returned to Sandy?
Yes, yep, I think that would do it.
When they come in to look at the project, is somebody available to escort them?
Yeah, I can do that, and then I'm not as technical as Jay and Robbie and others and, but I can, I can certainly, you know, understand the...
I mean, yeah, instead of trying to bother Sandy, yeah, if somebody wants to...
Yep, yeah, we can handle that.
And we only need the same person for next Monday for the boiler replacement, because that's next Monday, somebody has to be here.
I highly recommend the chap Dan to do it.
It's up to the support, they wanna pay him by the hour.
I mean, it's Monday only, right? I mean, it's Monday only, right?
Yep.
I mean, I just, like I said, I don't see, with the bid, with the RFP, the way it went out, with the design, I don't see a lot of need of an energy, of an engineer to be here at that time, that's my concern, but it's up to, you know, you guys if you want to pay them.
Wouldn't be surprised if Dan said something like, I either do construction services or I don't, he probably isn't going to do parts, bits and pieces of construction services.
Right, so I guess the question is...
Oh, saying that if we asked him to come on Monday, then, and we didn't use him for the rest of it, then you wouldn't be...
If you don't allow him to, for example, if you don't allow him to come on Monday, if any of the editors have questions, he's not going to answer them, and issue addendums and stuff like that, and, you know, at some point, he's going to say, I'm no longer in control of this project, the select board can review all the shop drawings, do the final inspection and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah. I hate to be negative, but, you know, we, and I understand engineers are expensive, but we also paid him $4,000 for a drawing and a RFP, thought we'd give a little more for that price, but understanding, you know, the actions, that's, I'm looking out for the taxpayers in the town more than, you know, more than anything, so...
Can we put a limit on, how long is the open time?
I mean, it's, there's not an ending time, it starts at nine, I don't, I'm just, I mean, you're going to nail right off whether, obviously, people are going to be here or not, so...
Okay.
Did Dan give you an estimate, Sandy, on what?
One forty an hour.
On what he thought the whole process would cost?
I think he just said he'll do each of these services at a hundred and forty dollars an hour.
Right.
That's it?
But not an estimate of how many hours that would be?
No.
I, yeah.
Just feels like our hands are being a little bit tied here, and that we got something and that we're not getting everything we thought we were going to get.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
What's the punch list?
Make sure everything's done?
The final inspection, there's always a few things that aren't quite up to snuff, and that's the punch list.
Yeah, I, at first I was more, first I was more on the board of like being able to pay for a certain amount of time, like saying like three hours, you'll be willing to pay for that, but if he's doing all these things and he hasn't given us an estimate of hours, that's not what you do as a contractor, you don't, you don't give that, you don't say that it's open, or we have to have some kind of definite, like saying, okay, you can do it, we're willing to pay you up to this amount.
We were also under the assumption that, that his, that the amount of money that we pay for the RFP would also include the visit?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So it feels like we're, I don't know whether a miscommunication happened, but that now we're kind of stuck.
And there's answered questions from bidders, and we should attend, if required, it's open, could be any hours, who knows, you know, how many questions, how much time you're going to spend on the phone. You can't review the shop drawings? Not me. Huh? Not me, I'm just an architect.
You're right. Very good one.
Without him giving us an estimate of how long it could be, I don't feel comfortable having him come or having, engaging in this, like we would need, we would need a contractor, we need an MOU to say, this is the expected thing, we're not going to pay for a amount, like on spec.
Is he, is he setting up the schedule, are the, are the contractors calling him and letting him know what time to come in, so he knows what time to be here?
Well, for the pre-bid conference, that is already in the RFP, that's a specific time.
Right, yes, they're supposed to, when you say pre-bid, is that on the phone or here?
It's here, it's a site visit, at 9:00 AM next Monday.
But not for everybody, that's where I was going with it.
Everybody?
Oh, all at once, at 9:00 o'clock.
Yes.
Okay, okay, so basically, you've got to probably do four hours, that's probably, that's max.
I mean, I would think whoever shows up at 9 until they leave.
Right.
Well, but if everybody shows up, if he's got it set right now at 9 o'clock, he's going to be here at 9 to walk through, that means all contractors will be here at 9 o'clock.
Exactly, that's my point.
Yeah.
There seems like there's some ambiguity about that.
Well, I wasn't sure if they were, one was going to be here 9, one was going to be at 11, 12, then we're getting...
They'll all be here at 9, so you're going to know at 9, they don't get to 1 or at 11, and then start it over.
That'd be my job.
It's mandatory for them, if they don't show up here at 9, they can't bid.
They can't bid, right, okay, so you'd probably be here for, say, two hours, so you're going to have probably a four-hour, three to, three to four-hour...
I'll notes or do it.
Yeah, you all have a three to four-hour, you know, a hundred and forty an hour, so you're looking at four or $500.
That I can get a little bit more behind, but it, the concern that I have is for all the other stuff, like if we're, if we could say, if he's accepting of the fact that we can pay you for 140, and then he can give us a, give us a, we want to engage further services from him, but if we're talking about just for Monday, I want to make sure that that's set, we don't have any other...
And that also fits our spending requirements, if you put four, four hours at the, yeah, that's well under the amount that we have to go and contact another contract, another person who does his work and get proposals.
We have a $500 threshold that we can pay without questions, so, at a time, so in other words, if he's here Monday, and we can keep that bill under $500, we're golden.
But then for everything else, I think we're going to have to...
We need, we need an actual contractor, MOU, or something that details how much he thinks this is going to estimate to be.
Yes.
That's what I, I would...
I mean, for each thing, I'd think it's probably three hours.
But I want, I want him to make that assessment.
Yes, I know, I know, I just...
Because it's also him committing to that time, and that's what he asked, now, okay.
So we'll go with Dan for the visit?
Okay.
And then we have to get some sort of invoice proposal on how much the rest of it's going to cost. And then if it's over a certain amount, then we're going to have to contract at least one other person, if it's, if it's over $1,000, right?
Five.
Five, five visits.
Add a check, add a shot, not a lease. Each visit is, if it's over $500 per visit, then we have to put it in.
We have to see if there's someone else.
Yeah.
Okay. Well...
So going back, then, I make a motion, did you vote on the motion for approving the...
Yes.
So I think we've worked out the details for the RFP and for the visit Monday.
So I'll add the details about the sealed bid, the RFP, and send it back to you, Sandy.
And do we need to let Dan know that the bids that come in, he can seal, they can't go electronically to him, they have to be sealed, and I open them at the August 5th meeting, or before?
Or you could pass them on to us.
July.
We could, that's what we...
I mean, how many are looking at, I mean, how many, I don't, the propane boiler may be on a different schedule than this, I forget when the bid opening is for the propane boiler.
Yeah, and we'll see, so whenever those bids come in, then I'll open them at that next meeting. I think.
The rules of the game of it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry to be a pain.
No, no, appreciate it.
No, thank you very much.
Over here, thank you.
I think the RFP went out, that the bids are to be sent electronically to him, so I don't know how they're going to be sealed.
So that's an issue.
It is.
So what do we do if the bids can't be sealed? If they're going electronically out to him?
Do they have to do it electronically, they can't put it in the post office or bring it to us?
It's already out. It was already on the, the RFP that you proposed, approved at the last meeting, said electronically.
I mean, we need to have a conversation with the engineer and say, when you receive these, they need to immediately go in an envelope.
That's how we do it.
Print them and put them in an envelope.
And never do that again.
Well...
Seal, oh, it does say, I just, I pulled it up again, it said, I'm not sure how they do this, sealed bids will be received electronically, so I don't know how that works, but it does say that on their sealed bid.
So it must be that the bids are coming in and not being viewed, and then...
Or encrypted, then you get the password later.
Then they're going to have to be sent to you, Sandy.
This works for me.
Yeah, but either way, just a quick call to make sure that he's on the, he's on the same page that we are.
Why can't we just say, send them in an envelope?
Because it's posted, so they're now going to go to him, and we have to start all over again.
They could be forwarded.
We can reject any and all bids.
They could be forwarded to us when he receives them.
Yes.
And that's what should happen, they should be immediately forwarded over to Sandy.
Because he technically can still look at them.
He could, but they're sealed, so I'm not really sure how that works.
It depends on if he had some system for it, but he might, yeah, but if he hasn't given us that information about like a password or anything else like that.
Well, maybe there's a way, but I don't like it.
Like how do they, how do they actually, it had to be pretty sophisticated, and it had to be some kind of online thing, because then he would have to have a record of when this was opened for the first time.
And I would have to have a computer so that I could open them.
Yeah.
Be able to hear.
You have to open them.
Yeah, here.
We didn't ask for...
That would be a big deal, because theoretically, if you have a browser setup...
No, this is all, this is all...
It would just be, you'd get an email out of that, and then...
Exactly, it was being approved of, though.
So I think we've got a question on this sealed electronic bid, how does, how exactly does that work?
That's a good question.
Yes.
It doesn't work.
So we have to ask him, because maybe it's going to come with an enclosed password, but he can't be opening those bids, they, they have to be opened at the select board meeting by...
They've got to be in an envelope.
By either the chair or vice chair.
There's no way to seal an email.
You can, I've done emails like that before.
Yeah, you can, you can seal.
There are ways.
Password protect, same Google Docs.
Yeah, but...
There's different ways, but...
So I've asked him...
He's going to open them before we do.
I told him that we, I'm sending an email, I said, select board would like to pay you $140 an hour for next Monday's site visit, give it also like a proposal estimate for the rest of the bidding and construction services, can you let me know Tuesday that you'll be at the 6:24 site visit, how do sealed electronic bids work, and can the bids be forwarded to the select board through my office?
What about the $500?
I could add cap, for money's capped at $500.
Yes.
And you could per visit, which is, well, per invoice, rephrase that.
Okay, so, anything else on this?
Yeah, because if he sets a separate invoice for the extra site visit and then reviewing the documents, etc.
Moving on, to July select board meeting schedule, so we need to decide when would we like our July meeting, traditionally, it's been one meeting in July because of the holiday, so two weeks later would be, it would be the 18th, oh, I'm on the wrong one, sorry, never mind, forget that, it would be, would be the 16th.
15.
15, sorry.
You, 12?
15, yes. So do we want to do a meeting on July 15?
Right in the middle, the eyes of July.
And then are we good with one meeting in March?
That's good, I can get used to that.
Don't get used to that.
I'll take that as confirmed, so our next meeting will be on July 15.
Excellent.
Okay, so select board comments and concerns.
Apologize in advance for beating a dead horse with this, but like I said, the original when this was first started and brought up, it was furnace because it's dying, and the downstairs heat pumps aren't in.
For sure.
It's gone way beyond that, just we've got to slow it down a little bit, so...
No, it's important, and it's important that we talk to someone to...
What are the problems with the oil furnace?
It's old, you can't get parts for it anymore.
You can't get parts for it, but then there's a blown...
No, it works, it's just probably down to about a 60% efficiency rate now, if we're lucky.
Yeah.
That's all, it's just, it's doomed, we had the money to replace it, didn't think it would be quite...
Involved.
This big of a project, but...
Right. Okay, but thank you, I really appreciate hearing all these different, we'll come to the right decision.
I'm coming in on the tail end of this, so I'm, I'm having to improvise a little, but I'm, you know, good swatting, bad swatting, you know, I'll just...
I'm going to be a pain, but I'll make a motion adjourned for all seven.
Oh, wait, we have to do the evaluation.
Yeah, so we need someone to, yes.
What evaluation?
Annual evaluation, yes.
So can I make a motion?
Yeah.
Yes, I make a motion to enter executive session as allowed under 1 VSA 313A3, the appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are now in executives.